Can I have a roll call, please?
Paul Kaufman.
Here.
Susan Edmondson.
Here.
Ruth Johnson.
Present.
Ashley Jones.
Here.
Billy King.
Here.
Kim Bailey.
Here.
Kim York's absent.
Kim York is home with a sick child if you'd join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Motion passes unanimously. Our mission statement is preparing each student for a successful and meaningful life. Is there a motion to approve the consent items?
So moved.
Is there a second? All those in favor? Motion passes. We are now on public comments. Are there any public comments?
No.
Now on informational items. Long-range facility plan update by Dr. Brian Pettingill.
Good evening. I've actually asked Scott Dobson to assist with this presentation as he has a very big part in all of our capital projects. The long-range facility plan for the years of 2015 to 2020 was done, obviously, before I came here. Many districts are rightfully criticized for making big plans and then putting them on a shelf. Well, RPEC is an exception to that. And this is just one example that will show you. Good example. The 2015-2020 long-range facility plan, I stole these pictures right off the cover on some highlights that they wanted to be addressed as part of this plan. So when you think about where we've came since 2015, just three years ago. In 2015, their recommendations for improvements, and just think about what we've done recently. They wanted to find a solution to the two-building high school configuration. Address space needs at the middle school level because East Middle School was very full. Find a more permanent home for early childhood education. Balance out our elementary enrollments and identify a long-term appropriate space for alternative education and other specialized programming. That's everything from our robotics, for example, now that we're finding rooms and giving them an actual shop to grow that program. And just so many areas that what we've done at Scholl. I mean, that's amazing compared to where they were at before. Just kind of highlighting what was accomplished through the previous bond issue in terms of getting all of our high school students under one roof. Moving to two, six, eight buildings. Moving to seven K5s and then a Scholl Early Learning Center that allows for that program to grow. Yes. All right, so the big projects, of course, you've seen this list many times before. The focus areas from 2015 to present were HVC and concrete or asphalt and concrete. Building envelopes, which is a lot of the exterior maintenance on that. Electrical upgrades, we've been continuing on. Scholl was a big one of that and looking forward into Raymore Elementary and Bucure Elementary, some more electrical safety there. Roof repairs, which are ongoing. And then safety security, a lot of that is our secured entrances, our camera systems. And then the secured entries in the schools along with intercoms is a big one. Again, some of the highlights this year is a lot of it is the bridal ridge, the added security doors, which did get completed today at that. Cameras across the district is a big one. Hundred and sixty to be, actually, it's like 169 to be exact at the four buildings. The new intercom at Raymore, which they are loving. If anybody was there the first day of school, they were having fun playing music on it every day. So that was pretty good. Fire alarm systems, those are ongoing right now. And then the access control upgrades, which we thought would be very simple, has turned out to be complicated. But it is all up and running and everybody's able to get in buildings now, so that's a good thing. As you see, some pictures there we like to highlight. HVC improvements, so far to date, we have 11 rooftop units done. We have the academy left to go, which we are scheduling over Thanksgiving break. That was all self-performed, the 11 units thus far, along with the six or five more at the academy are all going to be self-performed by district staff. We do subcontract, just a crane service to help us with that.
Thank you.
Eagleland parking lot.
Thank you for doing that. You save us a lot of money.
Well, it's definitely a big crew that helps out on all that, but it goes really smooth. We had no issues this year. A lot of the parking lot, all done at Raymore. I don't know if everybody's been by to see that with the cottage gone. It really changed the dimension of that building a lot. We will get the seal coat finished on the other half this Saturday. This Saturday, actually. We got off, I had a phone conversation about four o'clock today. We're actually going to do that Saturday and Stripe back on Sunday for Monday morning school. So there'll be no issues there as long as the weather will hold off. Creekmore, we did some just parking lot repairs there, some ongoing improvements and repairs. Eagleland, of course, a new parking lot, which has been completed for some time. And then more LED installs, which we continue to grow every single year. And then we chase kind of the rebates on that, whether it's interior or exterior. We work with the amount of lighting we have, we can always kind of steer our course. Timber Creek Playground, probably the biggest project of the year, the most anticipated for sure. Went off without a hitch. Everything is great there. So we have some before and after pictures. I know it doesn't look like a big change in the pictures, but if you've been on the site, it's quite amazing. The sod's all laid. The only thing left, of course, we laid the sod the day of school. And then the only thing left is the little bit of seeding and some seed mat, which, of course, ever since the first day of school, it has rained about every two to three days. Just as it gets dry enough to work, it rains again. We're actually hoping again for some Saturday, Sunday work this weekend, depending on how much more it rains tonight. It's pretty wet up there. I was up there this afternoon. It will dry up. I anticipate getting all that seed down and all the sod. The rain would be great for all that, so that's being watered all the time. The students are loving it. We haven't had any injuries or anything like that. That's been great. Yes, on that playground. And all the asphalt turned out great. The kids love the more green space. It's a lot easier to supervise. We're having a lot of good comments on that. We divided the green space in half on that playground. Makes it much easier to supervise from basically one location. You can see everything, the asphalt, the hard play surface, and then the soft play surface along with the equipment. Talking a little bit about what, there's so much data that went into putting together the 2015 to 2020 long-range facility plan. And I want to talk about just a few key pieces of that. This came directly out of the plan. And what it does is it highlights all of the building permits for the Cass Countywide. And then what percent of those are in either Raymore or Peculiar. This does not, I should probably qualify it, does not include our, out in the country, if it's not in the city limits of Raymore or Peculiar, they may still obviously come to RPEC if they may live in Lee Summit address or Pleasant Hill address. But just in Raymore and Peculiar, as you can see over a 10-year period, it was around 49, well, it was 49% of the entire building permits for the county were in either Raymore or Peculiar city limits. So interestingly enough, working with Dr. Monsis pulling the numbers, well, what is it? Now that we've got three more years of data, where are we at now? And something I want to point out here, right? See, the RP total, if you look at just those last three years, those three numbers right there from 12 to 14, that adds up to 356 new permits just the previous three years. So how does that compare with the most recent three years? It's 843 new permits between Raymore and Peculiar compared to the three years previous at 356. So as you can see, that is a trend that we have to keep a close eye on. So I wanted to update, these are all the numbers from the past three years. And you can see instead of 49% of the Cass County total, we're creeping up, even up to 55% last year and at 52.5% over the three years. So we've basically more than doubled in two years in terms of the number of permits for new homes. Also, some other just enrollment numbers, just to let you know where we were at the last 10 years going in, the numbers they were looking at. I went ahead and put what the plan estimated out up through 2020 and then kind of updated some numbers. So in 2015, the plan numbers, obviously, they had four years of data and then they estimated out six years. In 15, they actually estimated a little bit high. And then we more than made up for that in 16. And then we were 60 kids ahead in 2015. And then in last spring, in 2018, this past spring, they estimated, I say they, we estimated those three numbers there with the asterisks on them. Well, just from the spring to the fall, we were at least, we're about 100 short. No, maybe 50. 50 to. Yeah. So. By the time it settles out, remember, these are September counts, the end of September. So we'll settle into a little bit lower number than we are right now.
So that's, but that's significant.
Absolutely. And it's more than we anticipated and that led to a few late hires and extra work just to get ready.
How many, how many did we have additional this year so far?
Families?
Students?
Well, we went from 6,086 who we think we're going to be somewhere close to 6,250.
So we're about.
At the K12, so it's.
200 more than.
Not quite, but it's significant. 160. Okay, always, now that we've made some transitions, looking at our current capacities and kind of updating as the part of the plan was to balance out our elementary enrollments and along with address our capacity at the middle school level. So broke it down all by the buildings. I did not put RPA, our academy building, our Early Learning Center, or this building in these numbers, obviously, or any other ancillary buildings. I wanted to just talk about our buildings so I could keep the, without skewing the data. Timber Creek right now is our fullest building in terms of capacity. When you see effective capacity, that doesn't mean that's not a fire marshal number. And there was quite a process that went into that for the long-range facility plan. I did not readdress that. I went with the numbers that were in the plan, but I know that was quite a process. So I just stuck with those and trusted those for now. So overall, capacity-wise, we're 82% full with our current building setup. So then if you look at that just by level, by the grade configurations, our elementary buildings are at 76%, middle school at 86%, high school at 87% full. So what's next? Now that we are actually accomplishing most of the goals that were in the 2015 to 2020, and you may not realize it, but 2020 is not that far away. So fall 18, you're getting a update on where we're at, which we can check that one off. That was what you get tonight. And this spring, obviously, I'll be working with Scott and the board all year to work on our capital projects plan for the summer. That's when we get most of our work done. We've, trust me, we've already got several lists started, so you'll have plenty to look over. This summer, we'll be doing a demographic study of the district. It's time to revisit that. And then starting next fall, we will be looking at the 2020 to 2025 long-range facility plan. So the demographic study, the last time that was done was 2012. We used an outside company to help do that, a professional demographer. And given the trend of increase in growth that we've seen the last couple of years, it's probably time to go out and get that professional help again. So sometime in the spring, we'll probably have back in front of you a recommendation for a demographer to do that work. We want to have good information going into next fall when we do the formal planning process for the next phase. And that'll be good data for us to have.
I saw in there Timber Creek's in the 90%. How did?
They, that was one building that when we went through the process of doing the boundaries, surprised us a little bit. Had more students than we anticipated. But there is a specialized program that we located there, one of our programs, that maybe has 30 students that not all of them belong in that attendance area. We are considering moving that program to another building, which will buy us probably a couple more years of space in that building. When they collectively get to 90%, we need to be thinking about what the next phase is. So we have a, we have a short-term adjustment we can make for next year that I think will buy us more time there. Make it more like the rest of the buildings.
Are there any questions or comments from the board?
If needed in the future, is there land that we're looking at if we need another high school?
Well, East Middle School land, we actually own the property just to the west of the current facility. And the infrastructure was built for a potential future high school there. It'd be an East, RPEC East High School to go along with that middle school. If we went that route, that would be a huge process to determine, similar to what you, what the district went through to determine if we were adding here or building another school or adding a freshman center. We have property there that was large enough, it's about 200 acres for the total property. And it will support another high school building there or another large building. We do have land on Prairie Lane for an elementary school in the future, which is up in the northeastern section, which is again some of Timber Creek area, so it's yet another opportunity in the future. I think we're a few years away from that, but the planning, my hope is we get to the planning process, we set some triggers to say, once an elementary enrollments get to this, we need to be thinking about elementary. Once high school enrollment gets to this, we need to think about whatever the next phase is for that. Not really thinking we want to grow that high school any larger than it already is. The question is, how do we transition if we need to go to a second site?
That was 87% were at the high school, I think it was.
And that's with the addition.
2,200 might be a little bit low for the capacity. That number was when they originally went to this design, thinking that we haven't, we haven't really. Part of that comes down to how much sharing of classrooms you really want to do in terms of how full it's going to get. So, I mean, we have enough lockers for 2,200 and you, if you do enough sharing, you can easily get that many students in there or maybe more, so.
What is the biggest high school in the city? Are there some that are over 2,500?
The Two Blue Springs are probably close to that, I would guess. When you count the freshmen that would be included with their cohorts. Lee Summit North was at 2,200 when I was teaching there, but that was before Lee Summit West was built. So I don't think they've came back up. They're right around two.
This is, we are a large metro high school. We're not the largest.
When we went through this process, the public had the choice, would they want two high schools or have one big one? And they were very adamant at that time, they wanted one big high school. That's why we did the addition on the high school the way we did.
Yeah, I shared throughout that process that there will be a day where we need a second high school. It's just a matter of when. And so part of what our planning process will need to be is setting those triggers to when it is time to go ahead. Okay, we can't just squeeze more kids here, we've got to come up with another plan. And there may be phases of a plan. In other words, there might be a transition from one high school to two. There was a time where we had a freshman center in a different building. That might have to be part of some future plan, transitioning into the second high school potentially. So there are a lot of options and we'll have a process, much like we've done in the past, where we'll put multiple options out in front of people and gather feedback from the community.
Are there any other questions or comments?
I'm just glad we can go one year without having to do this significant planning process. So we're just having school this year and that's okay.
I do want to thank the previous board for all of the work to get us where we're at, to have, having the foresight for that. And I thank you for having the foresight to start this conversation moving forward because we are growing very quickly. So it'll be sooner than later. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we are on action items. We're on the assessment plan. And that is Dr. Al Volker.
Good evening, everybody. There was a lot of change. It's pretty exciting to see where we've been and where we're going. Tonight, I'd like to talk to you about our 2018-2019 district assessment plan. Assessments obviously are a key part of instruction. They help our staff determine where our students are and where we need to take them. So they are a very important part. Our assessment plan didn't change greatly from last year. So I'm going to highlight a couple of changes and give you a couple of just key points and pieces of information from the last year. So in this year's plan, if you'll scroll down, Michelle, to where actually it shows maybe first grade, just pick a grade level, you'll see that we noted and estimated the amount of time it will take to complete each assessment. So if teachers or parents, anyone wants to look at the plan, they can see, it is an estimate. So you'll see, for example, NWA, ELA, or math, the window, the dates that we will take that assessment, and then the one hour per test. That is an estimate. That test in particular is an adaptive assessment. So as you get questions correct, it'll give you more difficult questions you miss. It'll give you questions that are not as quite as difficult to try and find that exactly where you are. So sometimes that takes a little bit longer for one child than another. We actually really like that it does that, so we don't want to change that. So these times are an estimate, but we did the best job we could to try and give people an accurate picture of about where or how long it would take. People often ask us that. So we included that on our assessment plan. And that's throughout, from kindergarten through 12th grade, we make those estimates. And you'll see, as you scroll down to the 10th grade or the 11th grade, for example, there are more assessments as you get a little bit older relative to that, what you're trying to accomplish. So you'll see there's the 10th grade and it'll have the same thing. But the ELA, I mean, the NWA test actually in the window doesn't take much longer the older you get. So they're just more assessments, more specific. Another change related to our assessment plan is our social studies EOC assessment. Due to the updated social studies standards across the state, our government EOC test will be a pilot. Remember, last year, science was a pilot, so all our science assessments across the district were pilot assessments. This year, social studies turn. So it'll be a pilot. It will not count towards our APR score, but this year, science actually will. So that's as they're rewriting that assessment to make it sure it's valid and reliable, there'll be a pilot year. Students will still take that assessment and we can still use those, but it won't count in our APR score. So a couple of things I'd just like to share regarding our assessment. Last year, we talked about our juniors and what they were doing on our spring test day. Last year was the first year that we really gave juniors an option across assessments, which assessment was most appropriate for them to take in their plans for the future. So with our juniors, we had 408 juniors take the ACT on this test day. We had 22 take the Accuplacer. So that's that assessment that talks about readiness for a Metropolitan Community College, kind of an entrance, deciding where, what courses are most appropriate. We had 26 take the ASZAD, ASVAB. That's for military entrance. We had 42 juniors take the Work Keys. Remember, Dr. Barr gave a pretty detailed explanation to you of the Work Keys last time she was talking about it. But it measures applied math, graphic literacy, and workplace documents. It's really that career readiness assessment.
Do you know, we know what the outcome on that was?
I don't have the outcome results. I can get those for you though.
I'd be curious.
Absolutely, yes. Well, we also included in that, and I can get those results for this, we also had 133 seniors take the Work Keys. Now, I was just talking about the juniors on that super test day, on the day we had the option. But we also had 133 seniors last year take the Work Keys as well. So we can certainly get you all of that.
Yeah, I would like to see.
Am I correct on that? We can get, yes, so we'll come back.
I would like to see.
Yeah, that would, yeah, very interesting. Well, in October, in our work session in October, we're going to be showing a lot of assessment data.
I would be interested in the Accuplacer as well. Are our kids ready for that entry-level college classes? Or are they having to take remedial classes?
Yeah, and that, that's a, that's a great point. Yes.
Okay.
So in October at our work session, we'll talk a lot about NWA, we'll talk a lot about, and we can share multiple assessments across multiple platforms and talk about how our students are doing.
And that'll be a good baseline for us to start off with.
Absolutely. We think, oh, go ahead.
I didn't mean to interrupt.
No, one of the things that's different about now versus a few years ago, we used to in October report all of our results, including MAP and EOC. Well, with the tests that have continually changed, it's taken longer and longer for the state to get results back. We're going to go ahead and have our October discussion about student achievement. And when we get the MAP results in December, we'll share those with you later. But it's so far after the fact at that point, it's not quite as useful. So we're going to focus on the assessments that we do use on a regular basis.
Absolutely, and I'll just take this time to thank you again for your foresight and ability to say, we have to look for assessments that meet our current needs as the NWA currently does, so.
The MAP, I know that we are starting into a coalition to try and get away from that. Are we still?
So that's still in the early stages. And so at this point, the Missouri Assessment Group, if you will, is still vetting which assessment tool that they want to use for the growth model moving forward. So this year is just all about collecting information and trying to vet the assessments. And we don't know yet if they're going to select NWA or some other option. And then we'll revisit that discussion at that point in time.
So we might be a little assessment-heavy this year in our steps towards getting away from that.
Actually, I think the, we're only heavy in the fact that if at some point that were to replace MAP altogether, then we'd be doing less in the future.
We'd be doing less, yes.
But the biggest, if for some reason they choose another assessment, and if we decide that's just as good as NWA was just a replacement at that point.
Yep, absolutely.
The time, it was nice of them, I think it was Kim York suggesting last year to add the time elements in for that just so people can see what it amounts to. I just looked at fifth grade, for an example. We do about six hours of NWA. We do about six hours of MAP with fifth grade. And unless they're in some specialized program that requires more testing, that's about 12 hours in a year, which is less than, about 1% of their time. So people think we might test a lot, but it's relatively small in the grand scheme of things.
Especially at the high school, we have to remember, not every kid takes every single test.
Correct.
And I like that we give options, yeah.
Yeah, I think that worked well and I'm glad we were able to do that, I really am.
Sorry to interrupt.
No, that's fine, absolutely fine. The NWA assessment, as we were talking about, it really continues to be a valuable tool for us, assists in student placement for interventions across the district, as well as providing parents a pretty accurate, in our opinion, level of where their student currently is. Across K, all the way we're using into high school math. We're currently using that in Algebra I, Algebra II, Geometry. We hope one day to be able to use that in high school English as well. They're not quite there with the assessment that we believe is appropriate for us. So we hope that the NWA does evolve and goes that direction as well.
Did you say, or did I miss, how many students then did we have take the ACT?
I did, 408 juniors was last year's.
And did we have any take the SAT?
That I don't know. I'm sure we did. It's usually a pretty small number. I mean, often universities, private universities, east coast universities, they'll often want an SAT score. But the vast majority of the universities our students access will take an ACT score. Almost all of them will take one or the other.
So they've got four choices basically on that test day.
Yep, absolutely. So I was just saying the NWA is just another valuable tool. We'll share a lot more information in our October work session, but this is the assessment plan. It is very similar to last year with the structural change. I'd say that's the major component we've changed. Does anybody have any questions?
Thank you for that breakdown. I, it's interesting to see that breakdown, watch it over time.
And I think it will change. I think it will evolve. So I'll keep reporting that and we can kind of see how that evolves over time.
For kids that say they're a sophomore, one year and they take a test, next year on Super Test Day, are they encouraged to take a different test or the same test, or how does that work?
I think, that's a great question. I think the appropriate test is always what we're really looking for. I mean, if students change their minds, students explore multiple paths, students, they're in high school, that's okay. So if they say, well, I took the practice ACT or I took the ACT, I'm thinking I want to go a different direction, then we would absolutely encourage them to access another assessment. But if you, if you know, you know, I really want to be an engineer, I want to go to Rala, then I would encourage you continue to take the ACT. So it really depends on the student.
So on this super test day, is it just juniors or do sophomores do it as well?
We have juniors on this super test day that have the test option that we provide for. Now, we have different things that we do with our other students on that day, but these four key years really are juniors on that day. Dr. Barr? The practice.
The work, I'm sorry. The Work Keys, do they take that as a senior as well or is it just their junior year?
I think they could take the Work Keys as a senior as well. Yeah.
So we as a district, if I remember right, we pay for them to take one of these tasks.
Correct.
If they want to choose it again, then they pay for it.
Right, so the history there was for a couple of years, the state paid for every junior to take the ACT. And then through the budgeting process, it didn't get funded for last year. And that's when the board stepped up and said, well, we'll offer that as a, juniors can still do that, but we're not going to force every junior to do that. We're going to give the option of the fourth test.
Yeah, it's really been a great benefit and we thank you for that.
So they get one free off of the district, but if they're wanting to take it again as a senior, then.
Yep.
Do we have a scholarship opportunity for some of the lower-income students that if they are needing to take it again?
Right, if they come to our counseling office and there are needs based, we can work with, I believe it's our foundation or we've been able to provide, it would be a need-based situation.
So there are some avenues for that. I was thinking the foundation might.
Yeah, we want to, we want to support our students in whatever way possible. It's not something that we might necessarily advertise across the community that, but if you have a need and we will work pretty hard to find a way to support you.
What's that equity piece that we've been talking about?
We want our students to access what, we want to push them and have them access as much as possible. Sometimes we have to, they have to ask for extra support. That's, we'll do the best we can.
Any other questions or comments? Is there a motion?
I move to approve the 2018-19 assessment plan.
Is there a second? All those in favor? Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Volker. We are now on Board Policy 4630. Dr. Monsis.
Yes, this summer, we went through the extensive process to finish up the transition from MSBA Policy Service to MCE. And through that, we had several customized policies. And Dr. Hatfield realized as we were preparing for the new school year that we had overlooked one of the policies that we had overlooked one of the policies in our transition. We had, our policy 4635 has some similar elements to policy 4630, and MCE assumed we were replacing it, we were just doing as an additional one. So we picked up 4630. The overlapping material is still over in 4635. It has to do with personnel expectations. 4635 really deals more with just staff-student relations. 4630 is more general expectations for staff. So it's just one that was an oversight, and we need you to go ahead and approve it, so it'll be in place. And then the Policy Review Committee is getting ready to start back up again.
Any questions or comments? For the students in the audience, what this means is basically it's a handbook for our administrators and our teachers, and we're going from a really complicated one to a simple one that's easier to read. So we're transitioning into that, so. Is there a motion?
I move to approve the policy 4630 as a present.
Is there a second? All those in favor? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. We're on committee reports, I know it's early, so.
Well, the Safety Committee will meet tomorrow, and we've got a full agenda. And then I was on a Region Four conference call the other day, and our spring meeting will be May 2nd at Belton. So we can get that on the calendar early. Just talking about a lot of stuff that's just, wrap-up stuff from the end of the year. Advocacy media, advocacy committee is still working on stuff. We'll approve the platform in September at our meeting. Otherwise, we talked a little bit about the gas tax, it's going to be on the November ballot, if they will take any stand at all on that and what that means.
Remind me to talk with you about getting some mental health concerns on the advocacy forum. Because I want MSBA to be behind some needs, to get the mental health needs. So if we can get that organization behind it, so let's talk, let's talk about that. I think that'd be a great forum to get that going.
One thing I failed to mention last time, because we had a committee member who had some health issues with a spouse, Jerry Miller from Belton is now our regional chair. He was on advocacy and they just kind of swapped positions. So Jerry Miller from Belton is now our regional chair.
He still helps with advocacy though, right?
Yes, yes, he does. He doesn't get out of it.
Yeah, yeah.
So that's about it.
Wellness, Wellness Committee will meet next Tuesday, and we'll be planning a date for the staff workout, so hopefully all you can attend.
The Kaufman Boot Camp.
There you go.
I've started working out just to be ready for the workout.
Oh, goodness. I can't come, or otherwise I'd have been there.
You can cheer us on.
Yeah. I could cheer. Any other committee reports?
We have the first Audit Finance Committee meeting this afternoon at 4:30. We met with our outside auditor just to kind of give us an update on what's going on. Everything looks great. All is well. The final report will be in October, and the few recommendations that they gave from last year have been implemented already, so.
Good, good.
So everything's looking good.
Thank you for serving on that committee, using your expertise as an account, that's really helpful. Any other committees? So the Mental Health Task Force, we've met, super excited about the traction we're getting in terms of really meeting the mental health needs of our district. So excited for some things coming down the pike on that. With that being said, we are now on Superintendent's Report.
Well, very brief this evening, I just want to thank everybody for a great start to the school year. With all the additional students and finishing up all that year of transition, it was, been remarkably smooth in terms of all the aspects of what it takes to get 6,400 kids to school and get them in the right spot at the right time, and get them fed and get them back home, and hopefully get the learning process started quickly. It's, and I've been in a lot of districts and have been a lot of first days of school, but this is as good as any I've ever seen, and it's a tribute to everybody. And, you know, there's always a few traffic snares as you start the school year, and those will gradually smooth out. But beyond that, I think it's been as good a start as we can expect to have, and that's the hard work of everybody. Again, the enrollment's up, I think that's a good, healthy sign for our community. It'll, it'll, the numbers will taper down just a little bit before we get to our September count date as we, a few kids have transferred, they just haven't told us that yet. So we'll get that all figured out, and, but I think it's a good, healthy sign that the community is growing and supportive of our school district. This time of year, the activities pick up, you know, all the teams have been practicing for three weeks now, and the, the full contests start tomorrow. So we hope everybody takes time to come out and support our students from across the district and all their different activities. And fortunately, we don't have a home football game until September 7th, but mark that down. And then September 14th is homecoming. I know they're already doing auditions for the plays and the musicals, so there's a lot of prep work going on across the district. And, and it's amazing, as I've been in and out of schools, how quickly we got into the learning process. So that's exciting, and look forward to get out and visiting the schools as we go through the fall. So that's all I have.
All right. Are there any board comments?
I went to the high school open house last night, and it was neat just to see all the parents. You kind of, you walk through your kid's schedule, and you're in each class like 10 minutes, and they ring the bell as if we were in class. So it was pretty neat just to see all the parents that were engaged. It was pretty packed for the open house. So you didn't really get a lot of interaction with the teachers, but they had, you know, presentation, expectations of the students, and they said the freshmen are, you know, they're just learning their way around high school, how to be a high schooler, things like that. But it was pretty, pretty organized. Like I said, they ring the bell every 10 minutes, you had about six minutes to find the class, so. I was a little overwhelmed, but I'd been in the high school several times. But one key thing that I took from it was Mr. Rue was just very excited about the choir program. So I, I know we probably need to add on to the auditorium, but there's no way, because now they're having to do two concerts in one night, just to fit all the parents and students. I think he said there's about 200 students, maybe a little more, and just all of our choir. So that's just another area that the district is just growing at leaps and bounds, so it is taking off.
Well, thanks to everyone for all the hard work, for convocation. It was fun to see all the teachers coming back and all the new ones that are starting here this year, so it was fun to see that. And I got the chance to volunteer at the Raymore Chamber of Commerce Golf Tournament for us a couple of weeks ago, and that was fun to sit out and watch everybody hit a little ball around.
Any other comments? So we are now on Calendar of Events. September 13th is going to be our work session at 6:00 PM. September 20th is our next board meeting. And don't forget, our conference is going to be September 28th through 30th. If there's no other comments or questions, this meeting is adjourned.